Manam, kunduvarakilna, thomidi, nundipanavachina.
And nine to twelve, we'll read all together.
Bhajan chaurasi ko, now dekhi bharapad sama, ami savay jana mila padne se.
Deva, ma keda ma.
Hamra dal, henosra apno abhishaya.
Ma, ni vashikamana vaanimukumala.
Kinaki tabai ka chokarma bhaiko ek din, ani kahi hazar din banda uttam cha.
Pati hikun, gudaramla, devuni mandira, dwaramla.
Mera pamishsho ko bhavanma dhoke unama mancha.
Devu nee ho va, suru nee, kede ma, naadu, yo ho va, prope.
Pramprana anugara mayma dinuncha, sida chal chal nayla. Hola, kunai pani asan pranadi raknonna, esanarga prabhu, thane ho, jasre tabai mati marusha raksha.
Devu tanu vaakya manu, vanamikilna tim.
Lord may bless his words.
Praviles machanasi dinbaikos.
Pravusayam korke pravijas.
We'll look at it.
Pravu saitha ganimti prathna gar.
Sreemagatandri, me konthama chalishtana, varlam me vaakya mandu kustana, aruparamu, dina dastamayana, naanu. Me silu chautta maru parchi, samyam korke, pratekinci, atma tabeshakeinci, vaadkamana, pradistana, karabade, karabadukunna, panjispachi, ekunti shaktani. Esu kristana, avana bandistu, mirakta prakshantis kustana, tadju maru kodasaayam chindi, me vaakya manu, me mu, dhaninchu, varamuka, diva raatramalu, dan dhanincho vaad, dhanyuva chepa. Tanu vaakya manu dhaninchu takku, nee maru veskuntakku kodasaayapada, manu me kesamalkinsukundu, espravo naavamalu, stithinchu pradinchu vedikuntana, amutha tree.
Amen.
Mudu session lo, manam, iya ka, krystava, devu ni vasu stalamu dagra, vanna krystava jeetamu, idhi, abiridichenda jeetamu, progressive christian life and.
And last session, we saw that our christian life in the dwelling place of god, it's a progressing life.
Ah, pa ko, pailo session, macha, hamile, herekati, ki, paramishsho ko, upastitira nee thaun chaai, bhardei ja nee thaun ho.
Ippudu taravata, anubhuvani kustanaadu, kora kumarleka kirtanlo, taravata anubhuvani, manam chodak.
And we can see further, the kora sons, they have some more experiences.
Ah, ani, aja, ya, ami agadi, herde jada cha, kora bangshiar ko choraakacha, aja, ya, nee, rami, dhare anubhava lai dekda cha.
Inni anubhavaal gunda veli, anekamana sangatla, telisku, neerisku, na taravata.
And after we're going through all these experience and learning many things.
Ah, aja, ba, ami chaai, anubhava bada bhar jada cha, ami le, dhare kuravar shikda cha.
Vaka, srestamayana, drukpadamu, vaka tirbanu, nekuchada.
And they come to one conclusion.
Ah, ani, yo chaai, ani, ekta samagrama udasa.
Padavachinamalu, verse ten.
Verse ten.
Daspat.
Ni awadamalu, vaka dinamukaduputta, veedinamala, kante srestamu, bhakti hilalu, gudaramalu, nevasinchita kante, a devuni mandira, dwaramna, dundutna, nakistamu.
For a day in thy courts is better than a thousand, I had rather be a doorkeeper in the house of my god, than to dwell in the tents of wickedness.
Kinaki tabai ka chokarma bhaiko ek din, aru kahi hazar din banda uttam cha, dustata ka tambuarma, basnu banda barumalai, mera pamishsho ko tambuarma, mera pamishsho ko bhavanma dhoke unama mancha.
I tirbanu, nekuchada.
And they have come to this conclusion.
Ah, tino chaai, aja, yo.
This decision.
Ah, ani, tino chaai, abaiyo, niunayama aipuke ka cha.
Nakistamayana sangatla, eeminti.
What is the, what, what I like it?
Ah, ni, am, ma, malai cha, ke kurama mancha.
Devu ni mandira, dwaramna, dundutna, nakistam.
And they are saying, I had rather be a doorkeeper in house of my god.
Ah, malai chaai, mera, prav, paramishsho ko bhavanma dhoke unama mancha.
Bhakti hilalu, gudaramla, nevasinchita kante.
And then to dwell in the tents of the wickedness.
Ah, dustar ko tambuarma, basnu banda baru.
Devu ni gudaramalu, devu ni, pannashalika, gudaramalu, devu ni vasu stalamalu, nevasinchita, nak meelu.
And it is good for me that dwelling in the house of my god, and instead of living in the tents of the wickedness.
Ah, malai dustar ko, tambu ma basnu banda baru, ja, paramishsho ko upastitira cha, yo, bhavanma basnu, malai ma mancha.
Karanam enti?
What is the reason?
Isko karanki ho?
Akada devu dunaadu.
And there is god.
Ah, ni, tyanira chaai, paramishsho hunucha.
Devu de laavunnaadu?
How the lord is.
Ah, ni, kasari tyanira pravu hunucha.
Pakkunna vachinamalu, devu nee ho va, suru duna gavunnaadu.
And the lord god is sun.
Kinaki, paramishsho, prampravu, paramishsho chaai, surya hunucha.
Kede ma gavunnaadu.
And he's a shield.
Ah, ni, va, dalpani hunucha.
Suru du, enchasta tu?
And what the sun will do?
Ah, ni, surya chaai, ke gacha?
Manam, devu leeshte, suri kirana, manam, nee, padta.
And when, when we wake up in the morning, the sun's light comes.
Ah, ani, jaba, am, bhyana urda cha, ani, surya ko kirana udasa.
I kirana, manu, ke enchasta tu, aaragya neeshta.
And this, this sunlight will give health.
Ah, ni, yo, kirana cha, hamile, swasthata dincha.
Kabati, prabhu, ne, kristu varu, manaku, suru duna, nitya suru duna.
And our lord Jesus Christ is the son of righteousness.
Ah, ni, hamra, paramishsho chaai, hamra, paramishsho chaai, dharmikta ko udai hunucha.
Esu prabhu, yaka, velugulamunna tu, manai, idhi, manaku, aaragya mu, aashiravak.
And when we are in the light of the lord, that it will be, it will be healthy and it is good.
Ah, jaba cha, ami chaai, yo, jyoti ma, yo cha, kirana ma udasa, taba, ami le, cha, jivan pauncha, ani, swasthata pauncha.
Ah, taravata, na, kede ma, ne, dunaadu, ne, marchutu.
And also, we see, he is our shield.
Ah, ni, va chaai, ami, hamra dal hunucha, bhanne kurala dekcha.
Kabati, prabhu, ne, kristu varu, kede mu?
Our lord Jesus Christ is shield.
Hamra pravishshu krish chaai, hamra dal hunucha.
Kede mu, derikvadtha ra?
And why, what, what purpose we use shield?
Ah, ni, dal cha, ami le, ke udastele, pareggar da cha.
Protection, badrata korke.
And for protection.
Ah, ah, fula, bachavu ne, ne, mita, suraksha kolagi.
Tombo evadu, kirtana?
And Psalm ninety one.
Bhajan ekana pe.
Tombo evadu, kirtana, ayada vachinam.
And Psalm ninety one, verse five.
Bhajan ekana pe ko paspat.
Ratri vela, kalugu, bhayamu, paganri vela, eguru, baanamu, chikatlo, sanjrichu, tegalu, madhyana banda, paaducheyu, rogamu.
And thou shall not be afraid for the terror by night, nor by the arrow that flyeth by day, nor the pestilence that walketh in darkness, nor for the destruction that wasteth at noonday.
Timi, no, timi, no, raatko, atanka dekhi, no ta, dinma urne, kaat dekhi ne, daravu cha, no ta, andhakar ma, hinne, mahamari dekhi, no ta, madhey dinmai, ujaatpa ne, vinash dekhi, daravu cha.
Kabati, devu ni vasu stalamalu, akada, shield undi, badrata undi.
And we can see in the, in the dwelling place of god, there is a shield, protection.
Ah, ah, ni, tyanira, jo, paramishsho ko upastitira nee thaun ma, tya cha, suraksha cha.
Apostle Paul Ephesians, akada kodha, manam, badrata kaligunna, vasna, sandarpaal chuttna.
And apostle Paul writing to Ephesians, he says, how we, we have to be protected.
Ah, ah, ni, Paul perle cha, Ephesians commandal, ami kasari surakshitra unupadsa, bhanne kurama, laknu bhai ko cha.
Aaravadya mu, Ephesians, kurasana patrika.
Ephesians, chapter six.
Ah, ni, Ephesians, chaadhyae.
Padavachinamunndi.
And verse ten onwards.
Ah, ni, daspat baddavu niye.
Ah, padchayavadu vachinvarakunna, manam, marchmarch chutkunna.
And we will read alternately, ten to fifteen.
Ah, ni, dashtake pandrasama, ami palai pilo padne se.
Thudukku, prabhu yaka, mahashaktina betti, miru, aynandu, balavantula, eendu.
Put on the whole armor of god, that you may be able to stand against the violence of the.
Atyarur daran gara.
Ela eranga, manam, poradu, na, di, sirirulathu kaadu, gani, pradhana, tonu, adikarla, tonu, prasita, andhakara, sammantha, sammanthala, ku, lokanadu, tonu, akasya, manla, mandu, duratmal, samuhamla, tonu, poradu, sunnamu.
Yes, karan, hara, dinma, samnana saknalai, sabay kuravu, gara, khadauna saknalai, paramishsho ka, saaro, atyarur thaun. All to stand.
Fourteen, elaga, elaganaga, me, nadu, manaku, satyama, dattikattu, ne, nitya, ne, mayamaru, todukkunni, padam.
Ah, ni, power ma, melma, la, push, samasakko, tairi, ko, juttala, gau.
Ivaniyuga, ka, viswasa, manu, dalupattukunna, dani, tu, miru, dustuni, baanam, agni, baanam, la, netti, ni, aarpattaku, shakti, matala.
And take the helmet of salvation and sword of spirit, which is the word of god.
Atma valana, pratii samyam, nanthu, pratii vidamayana, pradhana, vignaapan, chetsu, aaveshima, samasta, parshadala, nimittamu, poramayana, patadala, tu, vignaapan, chetsu, milukuga, unna. Ikkada, manam, chuttna, mu, padahara vachinamalu, ivaniyuga, ka, viswasa, manu, dalupattukunna, dani.
And above, verse sixteen, above all, taking the shield of faith.
Ah, ah, ni, swarapadma cha, dekcha, sabay bhaik, vishashko, dalu thaun.
Prabhu, ne, devu, lord god, manaku, shield gavunnaadu.
And the lord god is our shield.
Ah, ah, ni, ah, ni, pravishshu krish chaai, hamra, dal hunucha.
Prabhu, ne, kristu varu, manaku, shield gavunnaadu.
And our, our, the lord Jesus Christ is our shield.
Ah, ni, pravishshu krishne, hamra, dal hunucha.
Ephesians, patrika, aaravadya, padahara vachinavu, chadina, prakaramu, viswasa, mane, dalu, manaku, pravecha.
And the, in the, here, we see, the lord has given, according to Ephesians, six, sixteen, shield of faith that lord has given us.
Ah, ah, ni, yani ra cha, Ephesians, chaako, swarapadana, saar, vishashko, dal cha, pravli, hamla, dinu bhai ko cha.
Devu ni mandira, awadamalu, manaku, labistana, badrata, la, gunda, manu, justana.
And here we see, the dwelling place of god, what we get, and how we protect it, we can see here.
Ah, paramishsho ko upastitira nee thaun chaai, ke, hamile, pauncha, ra, kasari, hamis surakshit, udasa, bhanne kurala, ami, yani ra, dekda cha.
Apostle Paulu, Ephesians, kurasana, samyamalu, a shield, ne, kurichu, tanu, aalochin, jestu.
And when the, when apostle Paul is writing to Ephesians, when he was thinking about this shield.
Ah, ni, jaba, jaba, Paul perle cha, Ephesians, commandal, lai, yo, dalko, bishama, sochika, ne, yo, lekka, ka thi.
Roma sainikulu, vaadina, a kede mu, shields, ne, manasavatukunni, tanu, urasna, tu, manu, chodak.
And we can see that he is, he is reminding the Roman soldiers, what they were shield using, and he is representing here.
Ah, ah, ni, tinle chaai, Romi shipai, lai chaai, dekhai kana chaai, tinor, yaadhi lai kana chaai, tinorle, jo, dal pareggar cha, te, kurala chaai, yani ra, dekhaiye ko cha.
Varu, dustuni, agri, baanam, aalpala, tu, shield, chala, gattika, unna.
And when, when the, the enemies, the fiery dots, when it comes, that the shield should be strong.
Ah, jaba chaai, shattru, cha, agadi, vata, ami, tira, aucha, antara, hamra, dal cha, te, te, kira, baliya unupadasa.
Or, ela, vaadu, vaadu, ante, vaalukunna, shield, ma, 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 kalashil, sustama, round, triangula, tu, shield sustama.
And we see different shape of shields, we see.
Ah, ah, ni, yani ra cha, ami le, dhare, dhare, perkarko, yo, dhare, dhare perkarko, dal cha, yani ra, ami dekda cha.
Ippudu, or, sainikul dagra, elan, shield undu, ante, etla, vaka, rectangular, full, body anta, cover, jesa, shield undu.
And the, the, the army have a shield, which is covers their complete body as a rectangular.
Ah, ah, ni, jo, shipai, orko, dal huncha, yo chaai, char, kune, varga, kaar, bhaiko, jo, dal huncha, jo, ah, fula, suraksha, dinu kolagi.
I shield, handle, undu, ra?
And there is a handle.
Ah, ni, tyanira chaai, samatne, handle huncha.
Ippudu, pandru, kodha, vasman, unchunta.
So, they are, they'll stand in the, in the line.
Ah, tino chaai, ekdam, agadi, line ma, bhasan.
Saiyammu, madhite, varsa, re, dua, varsa, mooda, varsa.
And the army, first line, second line, and third line.
Ah, ah, ni, shipai, oru chaai, ah, ni, pailo line, dosho line, tesho line, ma, bhaikanu, bhasan.
Ippudu, i shield, ki, i prakna, i prakna, vaka, slot, la, gaadi, la, undu.
And when we see, in the, in the border, there will be a border in the shield, slot, like, connect to connect. Yeah, it is, there is a connector.
Ah, ah, ni, jo, jo, dal huncha, te, esko, bijj, bijj, ma chaai, te, lai, adkaun, ne, kurar, chaai, banae, ye ko cha.
Apadu, madhite, vekti, yaka, shield, ki, re, dua, vekti, shield, i, re, dua, kalibte, e, modu, undi?
It will be joint.
It will be, like a wall.
It is, yeah, so, when, when, when this shield fixing with another shield, it become like a wall.
Ah, ah, ni, evadu, dal cha, aar ko, dal cha, jaba, jodincha, yo cha, evadu, parkal, jastu, banda cha.
Saiyammu, padimandi, varsa, gunchunna, aranukun.
And for example, ten people are standing, the army.
Udan kolagi cha, agadi, das jana, sai尼, garu, bekha cha.
I padimandi, kodha, vaal, shields, anniti, first line, na, na, vaal, jo, join, jesa.
All ten soldiers are joining their shields.
Ah, ja, ni, yo, jaba, das, sai尼, garle, cha, afna, yo, dal lai, tinorle, jodda cha.
First line, etla, kanapadu, undi?
And the first line, how it will be?
Ah, ni, pailo line chaai, yo, kasto, cha.
Manaslu kanapadu, only, wall, kanapadu, undi?
It will only, the wall will be seen.
Ah, ah, ni, ah, ni, agadi, line ma chaai, te, evadu, parkal, jastu, matre, bansa.
Itla, i dandalu, i saiyammu, i bandalu, matthu, vaka, yere, mo, pe, varsa, unna, aranukun.
And for example, there, there are thirty lines are there.
Udan kolagi, tya, tira chaai, tera, vada, line cha, bani.
Madhite, line, na, vada, lagia, jesa.
Tishu, vada, line cha, bani.
And first line, they kept it like that.
Ah, ah, ni, pailo line chaai, tinorle, tesari, raksha.
Re, dua, line, na, vada, vaal, shields, jo, join, jesa.
And second line, people also join their shields.
Ah, ni, dosho line ko, sai尼, garle, pani, afna, dal lai, gachan.
Ibrundamalu, na, varandru, kodha, vaal, shields, anni, jo, join, jeste, vaka, vela, first line, lo, shetravu, jarabadi, na, second line, lo, nikirada, nikavakasham, le, akada, shield, undi.
And we see that even though, that he break down the first line, that he has no chance of second line, because there is also a shield.
Ah, ah, ni, yo, shattru, le chaai, pailo line ma, tinorle, furera, aita, pani, tinorle, dosho line, lai cha, furana, sakda, ne, ke, tyanira, pani, dal ko, parkal cha.
Irozu, manachetalu, unna, shield, enti?
And what is our shield in our hands?
Aba, hamra, hatma chaai, yo, ke, dal cha?
Viswasa, manu, faith.
Faith, shield of faith.
Viswasa mu, adama, enti?
Shield of faith.
Ah, i viswasa mu, yavari, jeetamu, lo, vaari, viswasa mu.
And whoever having that faith.
Ah, ni, jaskasai, sangacha, yo, vishashko, dal cha.
Prati vekti, tanu, kaliguna, viswasa mu, every individual have, they, they won't.
Every individual has their own faith.
Ah, ah, ni, partheek, vekti, kathama, apusanga, afna, viswasa.
Sangavu, la, padimandi, nar.
And in, in the, in the church, there is ten people.
Una, sakcha, manali, ma, das jana, manisarusan.
Ippudu, enjali, ante, i padimandi, galsi, vaal, faith, ni, prakarno, faith, tu, gati, jo, join, jali.
So, how, now they have to join the faith next person?
Aba, hamile chaai, kasto perkarkle, aar ko, vekti, sangha, hamisangha, bhaiko, viswasa, la, jorunupadasa.
Uda, udhana, ku, yudan, jarutu.
And for example, the war is going on.
Udan kolagi chaai, aba, yuddha, bhaik, raiksha.
A samyamalu, vaka, vekti, vaka, sai尼, kodhu, vaka, vela, endek, vay, poyo, le, vaka, aaragya, baal, akano, kulip, vada, kinnabadi, padta.
For example, a soldier is not well, or other, some other reason, that he fell down.
Ah, ah, ni, udan kolagi chaai, jasto, shipai chaai, o, thick chaai, ni, ke, karanle chaai, o, girio.
Antu, tanu, viswasa, shield, padva, ne, balihin, gavunnaadu.
And he was, he was not able to hold this shield with strength.
Ah, o, le chaai, ekdamai, baliya, gari, yo, dal lai, pakarina, sakena.
Kani, i, tanu, padukunna, a shield, prakka, vekti, shield, to, ti, i, vekti, shield, to, connect, endu, gavati, tanu, padipoda, kodha, avakasham, le, punta, undu.
And we see, because this is connected to a next two persons, so, he will not fall down, he will, he will not, he will rise again.
Ah, ah, ni, kinaki, yo, dal chaai, etara, uta ko, vekti, sangha, jodi, ko, karanle chaai, o, girata, pani, feri, utne cha.
Vaka, vela, padipoda, kida, na, ekku, balamayana, karanamunna, kodha, prakarnavaali, jesa, tu, a, vekti, ni, paike, letta.
And even though he has a reason for falling, that the, the, the people next to him, he'll raise him up.
Ah, o chaai, ke, karanle, tal, loteta, girata, pani, jo, dhui jana, eta, utasun, tinorle chaai, lai, uthavunasan.
Idhi, manam, viswasa, jeetamu, lo, manam, abyasam, chal.
And we have, have to exercise this, in our spiritual life.
Ah, ah, ni, atmike, tharmachai, ye, kurala, hamile, abyasgarna, jaruri cha.
Vaka, vekti, konta, viswasa.
And a person have a little faith.
Ah, ni, kune, vekti, ma chaai, thoray, viswasa.
Tanu, re, dua, vekti, to, enjali, viswasa, manu, jod, chali.
And he has to connect with another person's faith.
Ah, ni, yo, vektila cha, aar ko, vekti ko, viswasa, sangha, jodi, na, padsa.
Avidam, gaimothu, ante, andar, viswasa, manu, kalichinapadu, a brundamu, chala, gattika, balanga, unta.
And when, when other faiths are connected, then, then the wall will be very strong.
Ah, ah, ni, jaba, yo, vekti, cha, aar ko, vekti ko, viswasa, sangha, jodi, cha, jaba, tyanira cha, evadu, baliya, parkal, banda cha.
Kabati, naadu, devu, sanidu, lo, manaku, na, shield, enti?
And in these days, what is our, in the presence of god, what is our shield?
Ah, ni, paramishsho ko upastitima, hamra, yo, dal chaai, ke ho?
Ah, devu, manaku, kede mu, shield.
And lord is our shield.
Ah, paramishsho ne, hamra, dal huncha.
Manaviswasa mu, manaku, shield.
And our faith is our shield.
Ah, ni, hamra, viswasa, pani, hamra, dalo.
Kabati, yedaina, vere, baanamu, agni, baanamu, dustudu, lopala, cherrabatta, nikavakasham, undu?
And is there any possibility that the enemy to enter?
Aba, yo, abu, dusta, agni, baadu, ro, hamima, ghushna, go, ke, tyanira, kune, mauka cha ta?
Vaka, vela, dana, viswasa, balihin, gavunnaadu, apadu, meelam, meelam, vaal, jesa, tu, a, vekti, ni, atmima, balaparista.
And one, one believer is weak, what will happen? The next believer will strengthen, other believers will strengthen him.
Ah, idhi, evadu, viswasa chaai, kam, jarsha, bani, aar ko, viswasa, le cha, ulai, balavantula, udasa.
Ippudu, maname, chali, jepandi?
Now what we have to do?
Aba, hamile, ke, gavunna padasa.
Devu, ne, yaka, shield, vaadukavali.
We have to use the god's shield.
Hamile chaai, paramishsho ko, dal lai, pareggar, unupadasa.
Manaviswasa, pu, shield, kodhu, vaadukunni, vaka, no, kuru, balaparista.
So, we have to use our shield of faith and connect one another, and we have to strengthen others also.
Ah, ah, ni, hamile chaai, abu, viswashko, dal, likana, aru, sangha, jodera, ah, ni, aru, lai, pani, hamile, balavantula, unupadasa.
Ippudu, kirtana, karani, ki, adama, enti?
And the psalmist understood this.
Ah, ni, bhajan karta, le cha, kurabuje.
Ne, ne, bhakti hilalu, dagra, unde, kante, kodha, devu, ni, mandira, awadamalu, a, dwaram, dagra, gunchunna, nak, siripotu.
And he says that, rather I be a doorkeeper in my, house of my god, than dwell in the tents of wickedness.
Te, se, gana, vaal, banuncha, yo, dustar ka, tambu, ma, basnu banda, barumalai, mera, paramishsho ko bhavanma, dhoke unama mancha.
Antu, ke, ne, yaka, statement, jepthunnaadu.
And that's why he is giving this statement.
Ah, yani ra, ba, vaal, evadu, bhayam, dinu bhai ko cha.
Yana, naal, kirtana, padavachinam.
And verse ten.
Ah, ni, daspat.
Ni, awadamalu, vaka, dinamukaduputta, veedinamala, kante, srestamu.
For a day in thy courts is better than a thousand.
Kinaki, tabai ka chokarma bhaiko ek din, aru kahi hazar din banda uttam cha.
A devu, ni, mandira, dwaram, dagra, unna, tu, nakistamu.
And I want to be, that I love to be in the presence of my god.
Ah, ma chaai, abu, tabai ko, upastitila chaai, ekdamai, preem gardasu.
Idhi, manakirbanu, ma, eendu.
It is our, it should be our decision.
Yo, hamra, niunay, unupadasa.
Kabati, inadu, man, prabhu, manathoti, sadakalamu, nevasinchala, nekure, prabhu.
And our lord, he wants to dwell with us always.
Kinaki, hamra, paramishsho chaai, sadai, hamisangha, basgana chauncha.
Iirva, evadu, mo, gra, adhyayam, pradhan, rathna.
And Revelation, chapter twenty one.
Parkas ekaisaadhyae.
Mudavachinam.
And verse three.
Tinpat.
Andhre, kalsi.
We'll read all together, please.
Savay jana miliganam. Ah, apadu, idhi, devu, ni, vasu, sammantha, gurakul, lo, avasun, eh, hera, manisarishita, paramishsho ko, nevasisthaan, ah, ni, uha, unyarishita, vasvan, unesa, ah, ni, unyar, uha, ka, manisarunesa.
Thoray, undu, ni, pan.
And be their god.
Varu, ke, thoray, undu, varu, thovu, undi, ani, vishal, lo, protection, ista, tu?
And he shall be with them.
Ah, ah, ni, va chaai, va, unyar, sangha, unesa.
Anta, gopa, nitya, avakasham, nitya, sankalpamalu, esu, prabhu, lo, manaku, la, bistam, chustana.
And here we can see, the eternal purpose and eternal plan, and which, which we are receiving the protection, in the eternal, eternally, from the lord Jesus Christ.
Ah, ah, ni, ami le chaai, ananta ko, ananta ko, vaako, wa, ananta ko, vaako, yojanara, vaako, yojana, saar, cha, ami cha, pravishshu krish, bato, yo chaai, suraksha chaai, bhaik, cha.
Idhi, manakongrins, benda, varan.
This is the gift.
Ah, ni, yo, ne, evadu, daan ho.
Roma patrika, aaravadya, me, re, mudavachinam.
Romans, chapter six, verse twenty three.
Romi chaako, tespat.
Six twenty three.
Romans, six twenty three.
Romi chaako, tespat.
Ela, eranga, papam, vala, vasujitam, manam, mai, te, devu, ni, krupa, varamu, manaprabhu, ne, kristu, yesunandu, nitya, jeetamu.
For the wages of sin is death, but the gift of god is eternal life through Jesus Christ our lord.
Kinaki, pap ko, jala, mirto, taro, paramishsho ko, anugara, ko, bharadan chaai, hamra, pravishshu krish ma, ananta, jeetan ho.
So, idhi, adama, idhi, nitya, jeetam, manu, kurichuna, sangati, kirtana, karani, kattama?
And the psalmist understood that he has come to the eternal life.
Ah, ah, ni, ah, ni, yo, bhajan karta, le chaai, ma, ananta, jeetam, aipuke, su, bhanne, kurala, lai, tha, gare.
Antu, ke, devu, sanidu, preem, sun, manupetka.
And that's why he started loving god's presence.
Te, se, karan, ta, vaale, paramishsho ko, upastitila, lai, preem, gana, thaunu, bha.
Ippudu, manam, dada, pu, edu, vishal, usama?
And we saw seven, seven things.
Hamile, saathu, ta, kurargu, bishama, hereo.
Envidosangati, devu, sanidu, kurichu, devu, ni, vasu, stalamu, ne, kurichu, chuchunna, tu, idhi, it is a place of permanence, adhi, nityam, undi, devu, sanidu.
And in the, in the eighthly, we see, the place of, the dwelling place of god is the place of permanence.
Ah, ah, ni, ah, ni, ah, ni, aja, ami le, dekcha, ki, paramishsho ko, upastitira nee thaun, yo chaai, evadu, steer, thaun ho.
I vishan, ne, vaka, stri, ardon, jaskun.
And this thing, one woman has understood.
Ah, ni, yo, kurala chaai, evadu, strela, ja, ne, ke, thin.
Anam, oh, meri, mesenji, pe, chinkar. Lucas, water.
Luke's Gospel.
Luca kapustar.
Ippudu, jepandi. Padavadya mu?
Chapter ten.
Daspat, dasadhyae.
Moppa, yene, veden, undi, nalapu, re, dua, varaku, manu, chutkunna.
And Luke's Gospel, chapter ten, verse thirty.
Thirty eight to forty two.
Thirty eight to forty two.
Ah, Luca, dasadhyae ko, artis, dekhi, bali, spatsama.
Marchmarch, chutkunna.
And we'll read alternately.
Ami, palai, palo, padne, se, lai, pani?
Antu, tu, vaal, pranamai, pochundu, ga, aynavu, gramo, lo, pravesinchu, no, Martha, ne, vaka, stri, aynanu, chetchuk, tanai, ta, chetchuk, re, no.
And she had a sister called Mary.
Ah, ni, tinka, Maria, na, bhai, utti, bhai, ne, tinle, pani, esu, ka, paun, ne, vachala, vaako, bachan, sundin.
Ma, Martha, vistaramayana, paripetukunna, chet, thondrapad, aynanu, tu, chichip, prabhu, ah, ne, na, vantariga, paripetukunna, sahodri, tanu, vichipet, andu, na, ne, chintal, le, da, nak, sahayam, chema, ne, ametha, chet, maneno.
Jesus answered, Martha, Martha, careful.
Dheray, kurag, chinta, gardasu.
Trouble about many things.
Erevai, nalapu, re, dva, vachinam, Maria, ottamayana, da, neer, kunchuk, re, no, aadi, ametha, undi, tisi, ve, bhadha, ne, ametha, chet, maneno. Ikkada, manam, Martha, Maria, lu, pa, esu, prabhu, ta, gadi, na, a, sandarpa, a, samyam, ne, manu, chustu.
And here we see Martha and Mary, they spend time with the lord Jesus Christ.
Ah, yani ra chaai, Martha ra, Maria, le chaai, pravishshu krish, samay, bita, ko, kurad, dekda cha.
Martha, Maria, lu, edda, ku, esu, pravu, cha.
And the lord Jesus came to Martha and Mary.
Ah, ni, pravishshu krish chaai, Martha ra, Maria, ka, avunu, bha.
Ate, virindhalu, kodha, yavaru, esu, prabhu, ku, etu, venti, prathan, itichcha.
And how much prominence that they have given to the Lord Jesus Christ, each of them.
अनि तिनोले चाहि अनि एक एक, अनि एक एकले चाहि प्रवेश कृष्णलाई कस्तो प्रकारको प्राथमिकता दियत
मनमेरु दुमु मार्ता अनेकमायन पनलो गुर्चि विचार पर्त
And Martha, she is careful for many things.
अनि मार्ता चाहि धेरै कुराको विषयमा तिन्ले चाहि स्वस्थ थिन
आइति मरिया एन जस्तन्ते चिन्तलेकुन्द नम्मादिगा एसु पादमले द्दकुर्चनी बोधमिन्टुन् वाक्यमिन्टुन्
And Mary, she is careful for nothing, but he, she has only one sitting at the feet of the Lord and she is hearing the Lord Jesus Christ.
तर मरियमले चाहि के कुराको विषयमा चिन्ता गर्दीन्तिन तर प्रभु, प्रवेश, प्रवेश कृष्णको पाउमनी रहर वाको बचनलाई सुन्दी
मार्ता अन्त्कनी निकु चिन्तलेद प्रभु अन्त
And Martha is saying, "Lord, do you have, worry about, worry about me?"
अनि मार्ता ले चेस बन्गी प्रभु तबाले मेरो विषयमा चिन्ता गर्नुन्ना
निन पन्जेस्तनान
"I am working."
महिला काम गरिरहेकोछ
निकोसम पन्जेस्तनान
"And I am working for you."
अहु चाहि तबाइको निम्ति काम गरिरहेकोछ
निकाहारण सिद्धन जस्तो निन पन्जेस्तन
"I am preparing food for you."
महिला चाहि तबाइको निम्ति खाना बनायरहेकोछ
नेन्ता कस्पड पन्जेस्त
"And I am working very hard."
महिला एकदमै मेहनत गरेकोछ
मार्ता एमु वोरु गुर्चि निकरेकुच्छुन्द
And Martha is, Mary, she is doing anything, nothing and she is sitting near your feet.
अनि मरियमले चाहि के पनि गरेकोछ नतर तपाइको पाउमनी बसिरहेकोछ
कालीगा गुचुन्दी
And she is doing nothing.
अनि तिन्ले चाहि के पनि गरेकोछ न
जूस्त निम्मादिगा गुचुन्न
And she is peacefully sitting.
अनि उह चाहि एकदमै शान्ति सीता त्यानिर बसिरहेकोछ
बारी निकर निकर चिन्तलेद
And don't you worry about that.
के त्यसको विषयमा तबाले वस्ता गर्नुन्ना